All right, we are called to order. I apologize for the delay, we were at the downstairs thing. Roll call.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Uh, here.
Mr. Meigs?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
And Mr. Bodisca?
Here.
Mr. John and Ms. Rogers are absent this evening.
Motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, so we've adopted the agenda. Planning Commission reports. Anyone, anything from anyone? Good, hearing none?
No, Russ does.
I guess I have one. I went to a CACT meeting and it was fantastic. That's my report. We spent a lot of time on the W and OD trail and then also reviewing the speeding data for the Kent Parker Street traffic calming. And that one has been pushed a little bit to get some more information, not about the speeding data, but about the obstructions and things that we could do, because there's some real concern in that community even though the data is not overwhelmingly convincing. But we spent probably two and a half hours talking about the W and OD led by Paul Stoddard in his first meeting, and it was terrific. It was a great conversation and really moved forward a lot of the things that we've been talking about or you've been hearing previously. So, an excellent, excellent meeting. It was sort of jointly agreed, it was one of our best we've ever had, so. That's it.
Anyone, anything? Nope, okay. Does anyone have any petitions not contained on our agenda? Having none. Planning Directors' Report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. We're just coming from the work session with City Council on the South Washington Street Plan, and they authorized this going forward to be reviewed by Boards and Commissions, and coming back to the Planning Commission for your public hearing input and recommendation. So we'll be working up that schedule in the near future, and we would hope to have this approved and completed sometime maybe in October timeframe. We'll have to work up the schedule for all the various Boards, Commissions, and others. But appreciate those who were able to be there, and I thought it went very well, thanks to all those who worked on the plan, particularly Gordon Garrison Kit. And so we're looking forward to that becoming final. And we also will be continuing to work on the city center plan, some of which was previewed in that plan, which we had the kickoff meeting on the 1st of June. So looking ahead, at a recent City Council meeting, it was at first reading an approval to move forward with zoning ordinance amendment on split lots. Planning Commission recommendation was endorsed with a change to the effective date for those who would like to vest their potential development rights. Council's recommending that it would be vest, the ordinance would be effective August 1, 2013, but those who have lots that are in question could do certain things by August 1, 2014. There's a set of items, they would have to put property in separate ownership, submit an accepted grading plan, and submit a demolition permit. So there's some standards there. So that will be coming forward to you on July 15. We're working presently to put together a very good mailing list so we can mail out information to all those affected property owners, and that's gonna, we're working that presently. And then the Planning Commission hearing on the 15th would lead to the City Council's second reading on July 22. And hopefully that can go forward. One of the pluses if this can be dealt with is we have a number of other zoning ordinance amendments, Greenway Downs, some others that we'd like to work on, and if this is dealt with, I think we can try to move some of those forward. There's been a lot of good work done by staff and the Commission, the listening sessions that you had. We've had inquiries from people who want to know, when are those going to happen? So that will help that, I believe. And then on July 1, you're going to have a work session with, joint with the AAB to look at the site plan for the Rushmark Harris Teeter project, and Gary Fuller will be leading that effort. I think that joint discussion will be valuable. And again, that'll be Monday, July 1. I think that's the major, maybe the only item on the agenda. So those are some of the highlights of what's going on. We have approved the Easter Seals Administrative Site Plan, that's going forward. Some funding was given by City Council to help fund sidewalks and streetlights on Huntington Avenue that are off-site, and so that project is, they've begun some demolition and renovation to the structure, so hopefully that'll be going forward and will be open in the fall. We've also been working with the two buildings on Annandale that were, that you all looked at, and they've begun doing demolition internally, and I think they're digging the foundation now for the elevator that's going to go up. So those projects are moving forward as well. So that's an update on some of the activities here in the city. Thank you.
So, okay, yes, you answered that. Old business, none? We have no old business, no?
Ask a real quick question of Mr. Snyder?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. You wouldn't happen to be able to give me an update on the traffic light at?
I believe Paul Stoddard is going to be prepared for that. We have talked about that. He will be up here after presenting downstairs.
Okay, thank you.
I believe they're making progress.
Yeah, I just, uh, I just wanted to know where it is in the process.
It's a little bit of a vague statement, but there's progress is being made.
The tortoise.
Thank you.
And there's no hair involved.
It's handmade, this traffic light. It's hand-blown glass, takes a long time to come in. So, no more questions? Anyone else? Okay. No old business, that moves us to new business. Subdivision of 121 and 123 North Fairfax Street. Take it away, Ms. Perry.
Thank you. Elizabeth Perry with the Planning Division. I'll take some time to present the staff report and also provide an update on the application since the issuance of the staff report. Also this evening, we have the agent for the applicant, Susan Pesner, who is here to answer questions after the presentation of the staff report or receiving public comment. The subject property, 121 and 123 North Fairfax Street, is currently developed as one residential use with a single-family dwelling and several accessory structures and uses. This land area is also identified in the land records as part of Lot 4, Lot 5, Lot 6, and part of Lot 19 of the Forbes subdivision platted in 1912. The application proposes a re-subdivision of the subject land area to create two lots, proposed Lot 500 and Lot 501. As a result of the proposed subdivision, Lot 500 and Lot 501 will each meet the minimum code requirements for lots in the R1A District. Lot 500 could be developed with a single-family detached dwelling as a separate use from Lot 501. Residential use of the lot is consistent with the comprehensive plan, however, no construction or development is proposed at this time. As a part of the subdivision application, there's a right-of-way dedication of 955 square feet. The dedication is required per Section 38-347 of the code. The application provides a combined preliminary and final plat. Staff review of the plat indicates that the proposed subdivision meets all code requirements. Staff received public comment on the application addressing two primary issues. One questions one of the property lines shown on the plat as part of the subdivision application. The other issue is regarding stormwater management and runoff, and I'll talk about that issue first. It appears that there are some existing conditions with stormwater management and runoff in the area of the proposed subdivision. However, the issue of stormwater management is addressed when there is development through the grading plan process. Subdivision applications, there really isn't a mechanism for that. Subdivision applications are about basically dividing up land or combining land and ensuring that the land area that results from the subdivision meets the code requirements for development. And so the application at this time is meeting those code requirements, and if there were development to be proposed on either one of the lots through a grading plan process, that's where stormwater management would be reviewed. The other question is about the lot line for the subject land area and its abutting property. We have two plats that are both stamped by a surveyor, each showing a different location for one of the property lines. The challenge here is that staff relies on the stamp of a surveyor on a plat to verify that what is shown is what is legal, and we don't have any other source to rely on to verify that. At the time the staff report was issued, staff didn't have time to really look into the issue. I wanted to verify through any records that we had available that there wasn't other information that could provide some clarity to the situation. So since the issuance of the staff report, I have conducted some additional research of city records just to make sure there was nothing else in our files that would help bring some light to this issue, and there was nothing that I could find. So where we are is that staff is relying on the stamp on the plat that was included in the application verifying that the lot lines shown there are the legal lot lines and that that land area can be subdivided as shown. So at the time the staff report was written, there was an option to have the Planning Commission open the public hearing to receive public comment, for you to ask questions, and for staff to provide an update on the application, with an expectation if there was any work to be done left, the Planning Commission could continue the public hearing to a later date. However, at this time, there is no other information that I can find that would, I could provide to you. So staff is able to recommend that you approve the subdivision as shown. If you have questions or you need additional information for your consideration, there are sample motions that I provided, and one of those sample motions allows for continuance, and staff is proposing a July 15 continuance date. That would give staff time to follow up on your request for information, and I ask that you specify in the motion what information you need staff and/or the applicant to bring you to make that decision.
If first, go around looking at the information, I am very concerned about stormwater drainage and everything in that area as is today, and something that was approved by, you know, Planning for that pipe stem is now causing a difficulty too, and there were many, many pictures included as far as what is happening there. And is there any way of, you know, we can always say it's going to be looked at when it goes to site or to grading plan, but unfortunately, you know, sometimes it is made better and sometimes it isn't. And that really concerns me with the properties that are there. Is there any way of somehow improving what is difficult, the right as it is now, with this situation, with the subdivision?
In the subdivision ordinance, there isn't a mechanism that staff has to require that type of work to be done, or an evaluation.
So it would have to wait until the property is developed?
Correct.
So there's no way of correcting the mistake that's kind of there now, that's in a different property?
Well, it's also hard to characterize it as a mistake.
Okay. An unfortunate circumstance.
It is. I mean, it's, I think, it's not to say that it isn't a concern, because stormwater management is important, and I think, I believe the city staff is looking at opportunities to improve that throughout the city, and very aware of that in a lot of land use cases, this is an issue that comes up. It's just at this time, staff doesn't have a mechanism to address it. We have, the mechanism that we have is through the grading plan process.
Excuse me for referring to it as a mistake, but it has definitely caused difficulty.
No, I understand, I just heard that.
I do think the pictures and the issues raised, though, do offer a chance to refer this to Public Works and let them do further evaluations, see what could be done, whether there's some larger public project that might be able to be done in the future. It certainly raises the issue and it documents it, so I think it is ultimately kind of an engineering issue.
We, just, questions?
I think I have some questions about this mysterious changing lot line.
Well, I have questions about that, too. We have at least one speaker slip, so why don't we allow public comments? Dr. Leslie Ry. And if anyone else has comments, please turn in a slip, and we'd love to hear from
Leslie Ry, 214 Lawton Street. Thank you all for all your hours. I've shared these hours with many of you in the past. I know the water issue is like, you know, you want to go down in your chair, we've had it up to our, you know, our water up to here, but it is an issue, and we tried to work with this on the other contiguous property from the beginning through the process.
I know.
From then, and it didn't work. So we're going to start all over again with this property and make you aware that it is a problem. We would love to have a resolution of the one that exists, but we don't have much hope for that. But we would like to make sure that if there is development on this property, that it doesn't contribute even further to the problem, and you have email also, I believe, from my neighbor because it backs up from our yard to their yard, and it's very difficult to take pictures of standing water and mud and mosquitoes. So as best I can, we try to relay the issue. We had asked for a water pervious driveway to be built in that pipe stem, and we were told they didn't have to. That driveway is eight to 15 inches above my property line, solid asphalt, and that's why the water backs up. It normally flows downhill on Lawton from Broad Street to Columbia. We were perfectly happy with it flowing through with the storm and continuing down. So we're going to start early in the process here and hope you'll focus in and be aware of this, even though that's not pro or con in terms of dividing the property. You guys can do that? Fine, do it. But please, when you do the grading, listen to the neighbors. It didn't happen when you did 216 and 218 Lawton. We worked with the engineers, we were out there with the builders. Didn't matter. That's it. Thank you. Again, appreciate all your time.
You bet. Anyone else? Anything? Anyone from anyone? Anything from anyone I met? Okay. Mr. Rankin?
I suppose we can track down George M. O'Quinn and ask him why in the span of three months he moved the line. Man, it seems like it's the same guy, right? Three months apart, the line's in a different spot?
Correct.
But I read the letter from, who was this? Tom Langen. It sounds like he was aware of this gap at some other time and tried to sort it out then. It's just, I guess there's no mechanism? I guess this is a pretty rare situation.
I've not seen an issue like this come up before.
Yeah.
And in all of our land use applications, when we have, whether it's a site plan or a zoning plat, we rely on the certification of the professional preparing that plat, certifying that that's the proper legal land area, and that the person who signs the application has ownership and the rights to take the action proposed on that property. And that's where we are here, and my efforts were to just verify, there was nothing else that we had on file, to the contrary. And when I did that, I found nothing that provided any additional clarity, and so we are at the point where we have to rely on the stamp on the plat. And if there is a dispute about where that property line is, it is a private matter.
And do we know what land area has been taxed?
I did look at the square footage of the land area for 121 and 123 North Fairfax. I'll note, I also looked at, well, tax maps that we have and plats and layouts that were in our land records, not just for the subject property, but the nearby properties to try and figure out maybe where the discrepancies are. And none of the numbers or calculations in any of those sources matched up, and that included for our real estate database. So if you look at the map in the real estate database, because that's a GIS overlay, it snaps tight, you wouldn't see that there's a gap there. But if you look at the square footage in the land area, it is different from what's shown on the plat. And what happens in a subdivision application is once the application is approved by the Planning Commission and recorded, that plat, new plat, goes to the surveyor, I'm sorry, the real estate office, and will verify the record. So it's likely that if this new subdivision is approved, the numbers in the real estate files will change because the numbers are lower than what's shown on the plat.
In Virginia, if, like, if the line hadn't moved and all of the plats showed there this gap of land that nobody owned, what is the mechanism for someone to become owner of that? I mean, this state must have some process, wouldn't you think? Or is all land in the state presumed to have been owned by somebody right now?
I don't know.
I would think it'd be a civil issue between property owners. I don't think it's something that local government gets involved in.
I guess when I saw it, I kept thinking, was there some type of easement of some sort here? You know, could you see weird things where, like, the city has an easement or someone has an easement? And I guess you didn't see any of that either.
Correct, we looked into that as well, because it is, I mean, the strip of land that they talk about is consistent with something you might see, or maybe we've seen before, where there's a utility easement. We can find nothing like that.
Yeah, because, I mean, because we have something like that between houses and other neighborhoods where there's a sewer pipe.
Correct.
So I wondered, and in that case, if we don't own the property, we just have the easement, so, I don't know, it's weird.
Man, how big a difference does that strip of land make in the usability of the other lot? There's some reference to it in this letter.
For 121 or for the abut?
You know, as far as the frontage, the width of the lot and everything, is it still within compliance within that R1?
You mean if the strip of land in question were not included in the subject application? I believe there is sufficient lot width for the entire land area and square footage that there could still be two lots subdivided there.
Yeah, because it looks like it's 90 feet wide. There's like a 30 and a 60, so.
And again, would that come under one of these situations where use of it, you know, we've run into this every once in a while?
I mean, it would still be more than it needed without it, so it's fine there.
The minimum requirements for the R1A District is a lot area of 11,250 square feet and a lot width of 75 feet.
Okay. So they're both very, very big.
Well, so have you read attachment two from Tom Langen?
Yes.
And are you suggesting then, in his last paragraph, that he is not correct in his assertion that they do not have the, let me just reread this to make sure I'm not misstating. He is suggesting that we should reject the application and advise the applicant to make a revision to keep its subdivision request within its titled property boundary. But even if this nine feet isn't theirs, they still, it doesn't affect the subdivision, that's what you're saying?
Correct. If it turned out that a court decided that the applicant did not own that strip of land, and they had to come back with a subdivision application to create two conforming lots with the R1A District, they could still do it. Where the city staff is, though, is that we don't have anything to tell the applicant that they can't use that land area.
Well, so, let's, because this is such an unusual circumstance, i- is it not, I mean, I, I'm, I find it hard to believe we can't sort of get to the bottom of this. If we, I mean, can we have it, could we have this resurveyed? Can we, I mean, it's the same guy.
I think if you have questions for the applicant, or if there's information that a member of the applicant team, which is a surveyor, if there's information that they have that you think they can give you to help you make your decision, it'd probably be appropriate to ask the applicant of that question.
I guess I'm curious why the city staff didn't feel that they needed to ask that question. Perhaps we don't need to ask that question. It seems like an import, I'm obsessed now with the missing nine feet, but maybe it's not that big a deal. I guess, I mean, and it seems, it seems like a solvable problem.
I think that we have two plats that have been stamped that show two different things. And so looking at those two plats and then going through the research that I conducted on city records, there was, you would think there would be another piece that would say, aha, here's what explains it. And I haven't found anything in our records that explains it. And so the challenges were left with two conflicting plats with two different dates. The date in the application is the more current date, and it is, the plat that's shown meets all code requirements. We don't have anything in the code that talks about any other requirement that would address this issue. And the way that the city has been able to conduct business and land use transactions has been with the certification of plats, and that's what we have.
Well, yes, yes, but has, I mean, you said yourself, there's usually not this discrepancy, so.
Or maybe it's just not been brought about. I mean, this came through, this finding came through, or this petition came through in public comment. It's not to say that there possibly aren't other discrepancies in land records if we all went back and looked at our own properties. It's just that in this case, this came up through the public, the course of public comment, and so we took some time to look into it.
Can I ask two quick questions? One, I don't know how this stuff works, but is there something on file for either of these lots before 2009? That, I mean, I don't, I mean, presumably they, there were at one point?
I'm just thinking back to the files I looked at. For 121 and 123, I do not believe we did have one.
So like in 2008, there just wasn't one, or they get purged or something?
We don't have plats for every property in the city, and we don't necessarily maintain all of those. What we try and do now is when plats come in through grading plan process or for something like a permit, a deck permit, we just try and scan them so that we do have a record. Other than that, we rely on, or I shouldn't even say rely, but there are records with the real estate office that I checked, and also the land records. So we went back in the land records and also the real estate records to try and find some other details.
And I think you hinted this before, but at the end of the day, if someone, whether it's for this process or some other process, if there's some dispute over somebody's plat, that's not a city issue, that's a private issue, and they go duke it out in the courts, and we don't really, so in some ways, this is weird, but here's one that's dated more recently than that one, everything looks okay to us, so it really comes down to them talking to their title insurance, I guess, and sort it out.
Well, maybe, I mean, maybe this is between the landowners to work out, except we're sort of being asked to vote on the subdivision without, I mean, I don't, I'm trying to, so when I read this, I sort of had a clear idea, but I guess now I have a completely unclear idea of how germane an issue this is. I mean, at the, like, it was very clear sort of this afternoon, so I'm, if we were to continue this, is it your belief that this missing nine feet can be located?
Not by, not by staff.
Not by the city, not by the city.
But I don't know, I'm not a surveyor, I don't do title research, I don't know what other resources may be out there, and that's part of the reason why the city relies on this mechanism of this stamped survey to verify the land area.
Well, sure, but it's the same guy, so I guess can't we just call George O'Quinn, he's maybe a fine guy, and say, look, you got two surveys that are wrong, you know, one of them's wrong, can you help us out here? Could we have the applicant do it?
We can ask the applicant's agent, who is here, can probably speak to that.
Do you, do you, help us out here?
Hello, my name is Susan Pesner, I'm an attorney over in McLean, Virginia. I am here on behalf of Rita Lund, both as her as attorney and has her attorney in fact, under a power of attorney that has been authorized by your attorney. We are here merely asking you to correct, if I may use that, a lot line that was not properly regarded at the time that a home was built. So if you were to look carefully at the plat before you, you will find that the existing lot line cuts off part of a house and part of a pond. The applicant originally bought the house and the pond, not through my good offices, and found after that purchase that the house and found after that purchase that the house was not located in a place that she thought as related to the lot line. So over the course of numerous dealings, she bought the adjacent parcel of land and is now doing what we used to call a boundary line survey, where we just take this line and make it this line. And it's now in, under your code, it is a subdivision. So we are doing the subdivision, I have read Mr. Langen's letter. Mr. Langen and Ms. Lund do, I believe, have adjoining properties. I believe that the house location survey you have for Mr. Langen's lot was merely a house location survey. Ours is a boundary survey, which is required, and it is stamped certified by Mr. O'Quinn, probably one of the best surveyors I know. Mr. O'Quinn has looked, as I have looked, and I have shared with the Planning Commission Office, the land records that go with this. We believe that the error occurred at the point in time where the street that existed at that time was changed. But it will be tens of thousands of dollars to locate this gap. They're called gaps and gores in real estate law. I know you must think, yeah, lawyers can make up anything. But it did come to us from England. Gaps and gores come as a result of more accurate surveying. You end up with something that was one degree off one way, one degree off another way. This may be a gap in a gore. Our fence is located in, was located in a place. Mr. and Mrs. Langen asked Ms. Lund if they could have permission to take down her fence. She did give them permission to do that. Any work that they may be doing on that land to maintain it, you know, I don't know what their purposes are other than I'm sure it enhances their visual use of the property. So we are merely asking for a change in the lot line. We are not looking to build, we are not looking to subdivide, um, excuse me, we are not looking to develop. We are not doing anything other than trying to get our house and our pond in conformance. And at the same time, we're going to dedicate a bunch of land to you. We are going to clean up a problem that exists. We're going to make this real easy. We're going to take many different lots and make them into just two lots, each of which conform. And that's what we're asking for. Was that helpful?
Um, kind of. Well, no, 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 it was very, it was kind of helpful. You should have chimed in when you saw us floundering up here. You help us out here, throw us a line. If, so, if we got the surveyor, who you, who you know, who's.
I do.
Could we get, like, a, we don't want to incur tens of thousands of unnecessary costs, but it would help us, I, I think, and maybe we have a, maybe the best thing to do is continue this until July fifteenth. And if we could get, you know, three sentences from the guy saying, hey, it's a gap, you know, it's not a mistake, it's, it's, it's something. I think it would at least help clarify for us what's going on. Because I, I, I'm sure this is, I think I'm sure that this is innocuous. But it seems, I, I don't know, it seems somewhat like we should get to the bottom of it before, before, before doing anything official.
Okay. Well, I understand your request, and I can, I will do what you require of me. But I don't think it's within the purview of the Planning Commission to be even asking for this at this point in time. There is no representation being made to you or being made to the public by you in the approval of this boundary. This is a matter between the adjacent lot owner and Ms. Lund. If they choose to do something about it, they're going to take it to the Circuit Court in Arlington, and somebody there is going to make this determination. I've searched the land records as a former title searcher, back to the late eighteen eighties, and I come to the same place on the plat as the plat before you. And I have provided that historical data. Something happened somewhere on New Hampshire Avenue, I think was the name of the street, that came originally and then changed. And I believe that it is a GPS marker, but I don't know that. And my client is not prepared at this time to spend the enormous amounts of money it's going to take to get any more of a certification than I already have before you. So I won't be able to get a three-line certification that you've asked for because I am not asking for either you or him to tell me who owns this property. I'm just asking the city to please allow the existing property to have a change in the line in between it.
Personally, I, I don't think we should continue it. I think we should just make a motion and move forward today. I, I don't think we're going to get anything new, and, and I, you know, you look at it, and it, it, you just see so many examples of things where, you're right, that when they put a line in, and it's that long ago when that property line was put together, where they just, they mess up a few degrees here and there. So I just don't think we're going to learn anything new.
But my question is, can we act on something without knowing the true ownership?
We have a plat.
Okay.
And we have a stamp on it. And from everything Ms. Perry says, that is all we ask for as the city.
But back to your statements, the last part of it, you said you were doing something for the city, cleaning things up? I mean, what did you mean by that?
Well, we're taking parts and bits of all kinds of lots, and we're creating two nice, clean lots.
That's what you meant?
Yes, that is what I meant.
Because it was rather.
I'm sorry, I did not mean to be confusing, please excuse me.
Okay. But clearing it all up because there's, you know, we are well aware of all the little bits and pieces of things all over the place. But, so the ownership will be decided through the courts?
If there's a challenge about the ownership, there would be.
And if there is a challenge, I mean.
That's not our responsibility.
Okay, okay.
I mean, just from a legal point of view. If, if it was, I'd say we should continue, but I don't think we have any legal responsibility for that as long as, as Ms. Perry said, we had a plat that had a stamp.
Shouldn't we know which one is the real, real one? I guess, maybe not?
Would be nice.
Well, at least it's, the, the one that's before us is the most currently stamped one.
My only difficulty with this is that, yes, right now, we're standing here and saying, uh, there's no development going to be taking place as of this time. But in the future, with our decision here, that will be taken in consideration for development and for setbacks and lines and all kinds of things like that, so.
Well, if you want, why don't I go ahead and make a motion, then we can discuss the motion, and then determine, and, and I have a.
I was just wondering about that.
I have a response to that, but I'll, first, let's get a motion on the table.
You can respond to me, okay.
Okay. I move that the Planning Commission give preliminary and final approval of subdivision application number two zero one three zero two two four for 121 and 123 North Fairfax Street. Can I get a second?
And I'll second it, so you can explain to me what you meant by that.
You know, Lyndy, I look at this, and this is actually very, I think, very good for us. We have a large piece of property here, there's a lot of things they could do with it. They could try, in the future, we could have someone try to do townhouses on it, which would really be, to me, disruptive to that neighborhood. I think by having two lots come out of it, one that is more than standard size, it's wider and bigger, even if that ninety feet, nine feet somehow went away, it's still wider and bigger than it has to be to be R1A. And the other lot is certainly wider and bigger than it has to be R1A, but it's not big enough to be divided, subdivided again. I think that this is actually very good for us in, in the future in terms of the integrity of that neighborhood. I think that other owners of that property could do, try to do much more. They, I mean, they could try to pipes them, they could do all kinds of things. And I think that this is actually very nice and very, and very respective of that neighborhood, too. And I think that, you know, from our perspective, from what Ms. Perry says, we have to go with the plat that's given to us. And luckily, it's a more recent plat, so I think that, that means that, that maybe he went back and looked at it again and, and determined that there was an issue with the way that had been measured and, and fixed a mistake he found. It wasn't the other way around. Anyway, that, that's my feeling.
Andy, Russ, anything? Any, anything? You ready? Let's vote.
All right, time. Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Teads?
Yes.
Mr. Boedisca?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Item B.
Just, but could we please have Public Works do some investigating into the situation? That wasn't a mistake that has caused some difficulties in that area.
Yes, I'll bring the letters and the photos to Public Works tomorrow.
Good, thank you very much. And could we also have an update on that when we, when you do so?
Okay.
It, it seems like maybe the people that do work with our Seabird could perhaps suggest some, I mean, there's a lot of fixes that could happen here. Infiltration ditches, even some simple rain gardening could make a big, big difference. And, you know, those neighbors, all of those properties are backing up and beside each other, and they should be working together on this.
I, I will say that we're looking.
Well, I'm just saying that the property that has water flow probably needs to do it on their side as well, so.
We, we are looking at a new ordinance that will be going to a work session with City Council and coming to the Planning Commission, which will implement more stringent storm water and water quality standards. They'll meet the Chesapeake Bay requirements, and it will have an effect on volume as well, I believe. So if that's in place before the development of the property, that would be, that would be implemented as part of any development of the site.
Item B. Northern Virginia Transportation Authority Funding Projects, which is, we've seen this. Is this, this, we did this in the work session.
Right, so this was, the information was presented in the work session, and I'm coming back to ask for endorsement of the projects that.
Good, outstanding, okay. Questions, comments? No.
So, yes, this is the same information you saw last time, there have been a few updates since then. This was presented in a work session last time to give you a sense of what was going on. Now staff is coming back to request an endorsement of the projects that staff submitted.
Questions about anything? No, I think it's straightforward. Anyone with anything?
I know in the work session, you were, you mentioned that you weren't sure how strong these projects were. And I guess, in the time in between, these are still the best projects that we can come up with, that we would have ready for this level of funding, I guess.
Right, we've lost our opportunity in the timeline to propose any new projects. We did attempt to expand, we had to take the WNOD trail lighting off of our request list. That was something I presented last time. When we took that off, we tried to expand the scope of another project, and that, that didn't go very far. So we've made that request to expand the scope, but I don't think they're going to take us up on that. And the only other thing I want to add here that I, that was not in the staff report last time is that staff recommends that we update the Transportation Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan. The NVTA, right now, they're just working, they're scrambling to put together a plan for just the first year of funding, but they're going to cycle around in the next couple of months and start a six-year plan. And staff recommends that the city have in place an updated Transportation Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan so that the best set of projects for the city can be pushed forward.
Does that mean that, like, you'll be bringing the CACT in and start working on something that?
Right, so what we've been sort of brainstorming as a process at the staff level is that I know the, the entire comprehensive chapter is, is under review and update, but this would be a short-term fix. The idea would be, we would do what we're calling a Phase One update to the Transportation Chapter alone so that we could get the projects that Planning Commission and City Council think are best. And this is on a tentative agenda for July fifth joint work session. July fifteenth, sorry, joint work session. And then there would be a Phase Two opportunity, along with the rest of the Comprehensive Plan, to go back and, and take a deeper look at any items in the Transportation Chapter.
So with this, like, the, so the CACT, so one of the things that unfortunately got, kind of, when that project got waylaid, the WNOD trail, to improve that, for example, over west or to straighten out some of those parts, I'm, do, do we have to approve? Can you, can you give me, like, fifteen seconds on, do we approve the CACT? Or do we put that in the comp plan and then we have more of a project? Or how does, what's the process?
When you say CACT, are you talking about the ped bike?
Yes.
Okay.
So there was the West Street thing, or the, the WNOD, making the WNOD go straight instead of the.
Are you talking about the trail realignment?
Yes, yes.
That's already going forward. NVRPA is handling that.
But I think, Mr. Meeks, you may be referring to the work that's being done to flesh out a plan for the WNOD that was presented to CA.
Yes.
And we're still working on, as that becomes more fleshed out, and if it came forward to Planning Commission, you endorsed it, put it as a project or a comp plan.
How do we, how do we get it in here? How do we give it, get it in here?
Right, so that's the trick. And the first, and that's still being fleshed out. The, in the first round of funding for this year, and this is described in the memo, the city could only suggest projects that were included in an existing regional plan called Transaction 2040. It's not clear what the requirements are going to be for suggesting things go into the six-year plan. But my belief is that having it in the comp plan will put the city on stable footing to request these things for, for a six-year project. That seems to be the way six-year projects work with other regional bodies. So I think the way the Planning Commission could make sure these things could be included is put them in the update to the comp plan.
Okay.
I had two quick things. One is, just to get it out there, so I know we only qualify for some of the funding because we don't have the tax overlay on, on the property. Is that something that we could implement for future years? And if so, what is, I know, like, the EDA, City Council, need to know about that, and I know they thought about it in the past years, but I want to make sure we have that on whatever timeline if we want to do that.
Sure, sure. So there are two pots of money, the seventy percent and the thirty percent. The seventy percent is regional funding, the city is entitled to a fair share of that, whether it passes a new tax or not. The thirty percent is accessible only if the city adds more transportation funding than it has been spending in the last three years, on average. And the way that's written in the law is that you have to pass a commercial overlay tax. Every other jurisdiction except Falls Church and, and I think City of Manassas or Manassas Park has, has done so. Or they're supplementing it with other means. That's another option available under the law. So you either have to pass a new tax, or you have to supplement the tax that you would have collected from some other source. And that is something you can do in future years. You can, as a city, you could, you could do that later. You're not locked out forever if you don't do it the first time.
And so it's like an annual cutoff, you don't have to buy.
Right, every year you have to sort of re-up. You either, you either fund it for that year or you don't. So you either get your match or you don't in that year.
And then my only other question, which is sort of in here, and I'm sure the answer is just sticking to comp plan, is that, to me, the Western entrance on the metro is a huge thing that is regionally, you know, important, so it seems like an easy one to make a case for. So it sounds like we'd want to talk about that in the comp plan in the coming months and then potentially have funding available to do something there.
Right, and I've already reached out to counterpart in Arlington County to get that conversation started, at least at the staff level.
Are we ready?
We are ready.
We're ready.
I move that the Planning Commission endorse the five projects submitted by city staff for fiscal year two thousand twenty fourteen, funding by the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority, NVTA. Those five projects are Phase Two of the Transit Alternatives Analysis for Route Seven, two pedestrian access to the Intermodal Plaza, three bus shelters along Broad Street, four pedestrian bridge on Van Buren Street, and five pedestrian signals at Columbia Street and North Washington Street.
I'll second.
Do we need a rule call? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous, outstanding. Number C. Number C. Public Works Department of Development Services proposed fee schedule changes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, you have before you some proposed amendments to Chapter 15, which would increase some fees, particularly in the Public Works side, for a variety of, of activities, including some related to dumpster place, I'm sorry, site plan review. Also, Department of Development Services is adjusting some fees to remove some present problems where we have, require a certificate of occupancy, which may affect someone who's simply moving an office from one portion of a floor to another. We'd have the ability to waive that. We're establishing a fee for written determinations. Presently, did not have an application or a fee for that. That'll make that more appropriately formal process. And that would be at the same price level as a zoning compliance letter, which we provide upon request for people trying to figure out whether their property conforms with zoning. It's often done for commercial properties. We also added some higher fees for certain uses, such as automotive uses and used car lots, where we have larger involvement in terms of maintaining the arrangement of vehicles on the property or other expenses. There also is now a permit proposed for sidewalk cafes, but I believe the, the, the permit fee has been removed from that. The interest there is to have more control over our right-of-way, where we have cafes using city right-of-way. So those are some of the highlights. We want to make sure you are aware of these. City Council's looked at these twice. We may, in fact, need to do an advertising of them. And I'm not totally clear whether it'll be coming back to you for a formal vote or not. It's not in the zoning ordinance, per se. But it does affect some of the uses that are governed by the zoning ordinance. So this is done on a, every, every two-year basis. And since Public Works was updating their fees to make them more consistent with their expenses and the activity involved, we added a few small items on the DDS side of things. Basically, an information item, and if you have any thoughts or comments or concerns, we'd be happy to, to take those. We had mentioned earlier, we were going to put out a determination fee, and Council backed that amount down to try to make it consistent with some other fees. And we also reduced, I think we, we were looking for a possible increase consistent with time spent for appeals, and that's been left at $300, so. There was concern about wanting to make sure people could get answers and have the fees be reasonable. So we've kept those in the $300 and $350 range.
I was surprised, but defer to you entirely, that the violations seem relatively low to me. Whether that's for erosion, or urban forestry, or whatever. Particularly if it's a second or third offense, they seemed lower than I always assumed they would be.
I believe they have, Public Works has raised some of their violation fees, particularly where they related to, for example, unlicensed tree contractor has been raised from $200 to $500. Some of the, there's a, there's a subsequent offense, which has been added beyond the third offense. It's on page 15.
Right, it's just the amount.
And this irrigation, they've added some items.
All this stuff seems cool to me. When, when you guys went through it, do you ever compare to, like, our neighbors and what they charge for these things?
I think we're still, I think we're still pretty competitive.
Yeah. Okay, great. Anyone, anything? Good. Other business? None. So that brings us to the exciting approval of the minutes. Anyone, any changes? Nope, no changes?
Oh, stop it.
There was no Tony the Pony. Any, who knew, Tony the Pony? I'm reading that, thinking.
And I'm researching it.
Motion to approve the minutes.
We approve the minutes of June 3rd, 2013?
And I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, minutes approved, outstanding. And a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, because you can't do it.
I'm, I move we adjourn.
I'll second it.
We are adjourned.